As you guys know, we have a hard stop. We have set a regular business meeting that starts at seven. So what we're going to do is we'll be done in here by six fifty to transition down the stairs. So what I'd like to do is finish the conversation as far as the updates and the Q and A by maybe six forty-five-ish. So we can talk about how did this format, do we want to do it this again? And then we'll adjourn at around six fifty this meeting. So with that, I will go ahead and hand over to the manager.
Thank you. So this really is just a test drive for this kind of update. I decided not to go through the dashboard with you because almost all of you always read the information that we provide and you could get that information on your own. So instead of reading the dashboard to you, what I did is I put together a list of topics that have come up, either from the public, from other agencies, or from you that you've been curious about. So I thought I would try to tackle these topics that are kind of top of mind for a lot of us. And if you couldn't give me a sense for is this interesting, is this helpful to you? And if not, help me make this better. Sound good? Alright, so I want to start with a preview of what you'll be seeing shortly. You'll be seeing in August, and that is a preview of our budget. And without going into any detail at all, I'll tell you that we're trending. Our general fund, which is our biggest fund, is trending at about point one percent below. So we're not doing as great as we've been doing in the past couple of years. And you're going to see some efforts on staff's part to really try to contain our costs. Expenses are continuing to increase, right, just like cost of doing business. Our revenues are pretty flat. So I've talked to a lot of my peers in the other cities and in the region. I interact with other S C F D tiers to hear how they're doing financially. This is pretty typical. People are pretty flat in terms of what their revenues look like. And we can talk forever about what the reasons why I'm that. But just know that here in Lakewood, we're really flat. We're going to be really cautious when it comes to the budget timing. Okay. I want to talk a little bit about these, a few, actually two position recruitment that are underway right now. The reason I'm talking to you about this now is it just isn't something that has broad public interest, but it has real specific interest to you. Think about the replacement of Donna Rep, right? So she left a couple days ago, and it's obvious for us that she's gone. So I want to tell you about her recruitment. Take this, we got almost a hundred applications, a hundred, that's a lot. And we conducted interviews, final interviews today. We interviewed three people. We'll interview another finalist on Wednesday. So we're getting down to the finish line, assuming somebody will accept the position. So let's see. Depending on where this person is coming from, you can imagine that we'll have a person in the seat probably between three weeks and a month. We're hoping to make a decision and have, give you one more conversation for the next week. And we'll get this person as soon as we can. And then we'll make sure to introduce this person to you. Sound good? So it's a big loss to have Donna gone, but also good for her. She's getting her master's and she's going to do something that really, really is her part. So we're really happy for her. She's also agreed to do some part-time for us, to do some onboarding for the new position. The new person, she's going to come in and do a little bit of help because her job is so, just so varied. It isn't, it isn't just the textbook read it off description. So it was interesting interviewing people who don't have city experience to hear that'll be a big, a big transition going from the corporate community to this community. But nevertheless, we've got some really good candidates and we'll introduce you to them soon. And my voice hasn't been going out. I think everyone knows that also our Community Resources Director has also announced her retirement. This is Kit Newman, another huge loss for the city. I think she's been here twenty-two years and has done a really wonderful job. Her position was posted on July one, and that'll be open until July nineteen. We don't, we haven't seen the same type of response as we've seen for Donna's position, but it could very well be because of the holiday that we just had. If we don't get enough applications, I think we only have a dozen or something like that. We'll just keep it open until we get more. We do have some internal candidates who are interested in the position. We had somebody from Australia apply for it, and I got an email from an individual from New York who's applied for it. So we know that the word is out. For your amazement, we advertise both through N R P A, which is National Parks Recreation Association, and C P R, which is Colorado. And Lakewood is, is well-known. We have a really good park system and we have a pretty shitty name and programs. So I, I don't think that's going to be a problem really attracting people. So I'll let you know, introduce you to this person as soon as we meet them and they're selected. In the interim, Amber Till. Do you know Amber? She's been around for a few years. She comes out from Golden. She's the interim Community Resources Director. Amber Till. Her last name is T H, I don't know if it's pronounced without a B, she's Till. It was important to me that the person who serves as the interim isn't the person, isn't interested in the position. I've done that before and that really doesn't work very well with the other candidates. It feels like we have an insider. And Amber someday will want to be the director, but just not, it isn't for her right now. So we have, Shane and I have had some really good conversations about this and we're, we're going to.
Now, do we go long or wait? They're piled up already?
Well, we have forty-five minutes, so we may not get to all piled up. I'll let you, I'm okay if it's like a clarification.
Oh, I was just going to say, when is Kit's time?
Oh, see, I was, okay. August second is her last day. August second. Yeah. So thanks for asking, Rich. Her last name is Friday the second. Is that right? Is there another question like that?
Yeah. Yeah, what's Donna Rep and what's her degree going to be?
Social work. So Katie, but after that, she was volunteering at the police department and doing her interim with one day a week, going till ten at night on victim, victim assistance, victim advocates. And she got her bachelor's degree recently in the last year. So she's going to go get a master's. So she's going to try to get that done in one year. Just for reference, it took me seven to get my master's. So she's really pushing, she's really doing it quick.
Cool.
Okay. Alright, so now I'm going to totally pivot and talk about something else, something that's compromised to a lot of you, and that is the Jeffco school closures. I know we're hearing from different citizen groups, different neighborhoods, who are interested in their property being, the school property not turning into a whole bunch of housing generally. I mean, there are all different opinions. But I want to give you a sense for what this is. In Lakewood, we have five, five schools are closed, that have already closed. And those schools are being put up at market rates. So they want to sell these, the whole issue there is financial for them. And they want to sell these properties at market rate. And it's market based on the underlying zoning, not the current use, right? Because think about, a lot of schools have a lot of acreage that are, we would call park, right? Ballfields and green space and playgrounds. So we would zone that, that's just for us apartments. But for them, they're looking at the underlying zoning. And when you don't know, you can pretty much guess that the zoning that the school resides in is probably, looks a lot like the neighborhood that it's in, right? Because schools and churches don't have to, they, they're exempt from local zoning. So that's a, that's a concern when they're looking at market rates and saying, sure, the, the cities can just pay market rate for these schools, which is, it adds up to a lot of money really quick. So that's the concern that the schools are dealing with right now, pardon me, that the cities are dealing with right now, to the schools. So having said that, what's really interesting about this, and forgive me if you've heard me talk about this before, but I think it's really important, we've, as it relates to our, Lakewood's relationship with the schools, it's as if we've always been on the same side of the table, always. There are several schools that Lakewood maintains the property and has for decades. For example, at Emery, that's right adjacent to the Recreation Center, the Land Recreation Center. And just out of convenience, we've said, look, schools will maintain, while we're maintaining our ballfield, we'll maintain your outside stays. And these are just one of the cities that we're managing. And we can pass it for years and several other schools. So it's really interesting that while we used to come scenes out of the table and now they're looking for, they're trying to sell at market rate for us, right? And then, you know, our residents are saying, we want to be applied, buy this property. So they don't, you know, so we can enjoy it as more open, less dense experience. The other thing we do that is bound to change is our school resource officers. In almost every city, so don't pull me, let's, let me do it this way. In many cities across our country, there's a deal with the school system. And the deal is something like, let's split the school resource officers fifty-fifty. Schools pay for fifty, having the same base for fifty percent of the cost of these officers. I've also heard, it's very common in Colorado, I've also heard the ratio being seventy-five, twenty-five. Because if you think about the school a year, those students in school, about seventy-five percent a year. And so we would get our officers, usually get them back in the station on patrol, whatever it might be, for the twenty-five percent. So we have seven, when we're fully staffed at the schools, we have seven officers in these schools. That amounts to about one point two million a year. So it's interesting now. So it really changes our relationship when we've always been partners and now we're looking at a more business relationship. There have been a lot of lists or questions for city managers saying, who, what's all, you know, what do you do with your school resource officers? And most, in my experience, most of the cities do have some kind of cost share with the schools. Now Westminster shared, their cities divided, they're about half of Jefferson County and half of Navas County, about fifty-fifty-ish. And in Adam County, they have a deal with the schools. But in Jefferson County, the cities pay a hundred percent of whatever that is. Isn't that interesting? So West came forward and said, their city manager wrote to all the city managers and said, you know, we're about to, to strike a similar deal with Jeffco. And it would be a shared deal because all of us financially are struggling, all of us. I mean, you'll hear that, hear that from county here and the schools and all the cities because our revenues are pretty flat, all our expenses are increasing. So I just want to make you aware of that. So there are going to be some tough conversations in our future with the schools. We have a good relationship with our schools. And I had this conversation about Lakewood wanting to explore that and wanting to some, some kind of cost share. But I just want you to hear that because that'll be kind of in the, in the atmosphere coming soon. And I think Westminster has already approached the schools with something very finite. So that's coming. And that's one point two that we, that we lose those, we lose four. So that's, that's just interesting and I wanted to tell you that. I don't know why my voice is going out.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Are all of the properties being sold like as one full unit? Or are any of them looking like, just to his point of like part-time versus there's a good way? Are any of them getting divided up or parceled out?
As it stands, I don't think so. I can only speak to Lakewood's. Can you, we've got some folks who I think will come in. Can you write them in? I think America's dead. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So yeah, there's still, I can only speak to Lakewood. So remember, now we're, I think twenty-one schools that have closed. And there are some, there's, each one's a little bit different, but generally, our schools are, in our case, the schools are all site, generally. Yeah, so. Well, the other time I talked to the schools, they say, we're more than willing to talk about it. So this is new for them, obviously, and. There's a school in Westminster that they closed, but then after looking at the deeds and the originating documents, that actually had a reverter on it. And the reverter says that if they ever try to sell that property goes, just like our partners, several of our partners, all of them. The reverter says, if the school tried to sell the school, the title of that school goes to the city. And they didn't know that until after they closed the school. So now it's in Westminster's hands. What are they going to do with that site? They just inherited the site. And they're going to, for near, if they're interested, they're going to take the school and turn it into a park.
Okay. Was there originally a discount for governments, like cities? I thought there was.
No, not the discount.
But, you know.
But we are clearly interested in that it's in there and has lived part-time. You know a lot about this. The, the residents around that property are, really would like us to secure that as part-time. There was a schism or a concern as it relates to what Lakewood made the bid on it. And we actually came to Emery, the Denver Water. But Jeffco Open Space wants to help her and pay twenty-five percent, which is, heck yeah, right? That's, that's a good thing. The problem is Denver Water, Denver Water is putting an added reverter on it, which causes problems for Jeffco. Long story short, it's just kind of really clunky. And I kept saying Lakewood will never sell it, so don't worry, but you have fifty reverts on it, reverts on it. But anyway, I, I had the opportunity to meet the CEO of Denver Water because of this. And we met with him last week. His name is Alan, he's Alan Zarver. And we're going to start, for other reasons, a relationship. I then really built a good relationship between us. They care a lot about water wise and water conservation. And I think that would be a really great partnership for us. So I wanted to tell you that that's just, that's like a really nice entree for us. And we explained the whole issue with all these reverts. Lakewood, by our charter, can't sell. Jeffco, if we use Jeffco's dollars, there's a reverter on that and then Denver Water's, and whatnot. I was, I was, so we talked through this whole issue and realized, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to be able to acquire the site. We just have to get to the funding and get past your offer. So I just wanted to hear that. We moved pretty well last time. I want to give you a couple of project updates. You recently approved a new property for the maintenance campus. And sometimes it's easy to think that once you approve a land purchase, by the next week, there'll be a new campus of the new maintenance campus there. So I want to add a little, a little bit of reality. I'm sorry, I asked Max what's the other time, so I can tell you what you can expect. We're going to close on the property on the twenty-third. So between, two thousand and four, so that's only in a couple weeks. So between now and spring of twenty-five, we're going to separate utilities, establish some short-term agreements with Toronto, and start our contracts. We're going to start that transition. In the summer, fall of twenty twenty-four, we're going to move some interim uses over there because some of those buildings are, are ready to use. And we're going to take advantage of that and create some relief at our existing sites. If, later I'm going to ask if you have any tours in mind, site's open tomorrow. So if that's when you want to go look at it, I'm happy to set that up. That's just, that's just an easy thing. Let's do it after the deal is done on the twenty-fifth, just to be sure. But if you want to go look at it, I've got, I did, I have, and it's, it's impressive. And it can go be a really nice amenity for the future of this really important infrastructure stuff that those women will need in public works. Not to mention the recycling center will be much nicer. So it looks like we're going to try to do some of Lakewood's rights, lead storage, and our science shop, et cetera, to move over there in the interim, which is nice that we can actually use it. Fall of twenty twenty-four, so that's this fall, going into fall of twenty-five, we're going to undergo a master plan development by them. So that's when we're going to really look at the site and where the functions are and how this, how all of this should work. All through this, we'll have to check back to the city council and, and the public to, so you have a sense for how this is going. So now, it'll likely take five to ten years to fully construct this. Okay, so this isn't tomorrow. And the little step I missed is we're going to have to talk about financing options. Because this, this isn't cheap. This isn't, this isn't really sexy, right? Because it's big equipment and dusty, smelly, noisy things. But it's really a unnecessary part of the location. So that's it, that's, that's the deal on the maintenance center. Good? We're good? Is there a question?
No, 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 I like the idea of an update that we've done something, we don't get enough of those, I don't believe. You know, after we approve something and vote for something, then.
That's what I think.
It goes off, so this is great.
Thank you. I was thinking that this might be helpful because this is the stuff that's just kind of, it's, it's not private, but it's the inside stuff, it's the improvement. Now you want to know, like, it's not being elected right now, right? It's almost like, so thanks for that feedback. Same thing with Recovery Works. I know there's some key interest in what's going to happen to the population that has served at Recovery Works when we're going through the remodel of the facility itself. So let's see if I can. The first thing I want you to hear is our cold weather activation goes from first of October till end of April. So we're anticipating that being our cold weather. If that makes sense, we will close Recovery Works during that time. There was a time where we thought we would remodel. So instead, we're going to use that time to do the R F P for the architect. We're going to do the procurement for the project manager. And then we're going to do design information. So that's all this, that's all the stuff that's behind the scenes that'll take place while Recovery Works is still open during these most challenging months for the folks who are quote unquote house, or unhouse, makes sense? So then, then we're going to have an activation where we're actually doing the construction. And that'll be our plan. This is rough, this is really rough time periods, but that'll be during the warm months. That also means a closure. We're going to have to close that facility while we're actually doing the work. You just have to, it's a safety issue. So the next question is, what do we do when we no longer have a service for this population? I have, I've personally talked to the county about it. We're going to lean really heavy on our relationship with the county to see if we can at least find some temporary solutions for this. There isn't a way around it. We're going to have to close the facility. So the way we're handling it internally is to close it winter, those warm months. Makes sense? So please don't quote me on the day, times and days, but I'm trying to give you a sense for when that's going to be. As soon as you make plans, they'll always get muddled somehow, but that's the point, makes sense? I'll, that will be something we follow up with really closely because I'll be able to communicate out, which frankly, you do that really well. Your distribution channels are different than the city's and really helpful when you help those atmospheres on the draw and system. So thank you for doing that. Okay, one more thing. There's been a big interest of the city looking for a site where we can do relocable structures. And, but first it has to, the code has to change. Some people call these Palat homes. We don't call them Palat homes because that's brand. And there's no guarantee either, but think about them like a Palat home or like a temporary place, or again, for our announced renovation.
Like a trailer?
What?
Like a trailer.
No, it's.
Little permanent place that doesn't have wheels.
What?
Doesn't have wheels.
I don't think, no, it's not going to have, have you seen, have you visited?
No, no, no.
So when we talk about tours, when we talk about tours, if you say, I have an idea, let's go visit, uh, oh, shelter community, or, you know, personal life, done it. A few, who else has done that? Oh, so we're probably this year, Elon Musk, you have to.
I probably hosted one with a different brand, I think, too.
That's a little annoying. We don't want to land on one brand. Maybe, well, maybe that, that's the brand, but I just don't want to, you know, it's like, Clans is a brand. So you can say, I need a tissue.
I want to make those Xerox to this. See?
No, so you just said.
I didn't, kind of.
No, don't get a copy, you can get a silver one. And you couldn't get a copy.
Yeah.
But first the code has to change. And so just to add a little more confusion, the code's going to be called Lakewood Municipal Code Amended for Sleeping Units. Sleeping units, I need to call them relocable structure for this, sleeping units. So that's, that's scheduled. I know this is of key interest to you, August twelfth, first reading, August twenty-sixth, secondary reading. Okay, so as soon as that happens, we'll be negotiating a relationship, obviously, in Lakewood where we can address, there is a property right now that we can talk about. But when that becomes the case, we'll have a conversation. Makes sense?
Yeah. Is the, maybe this is not fully covered quite yet, but will it be for one particular park in the city or a couple parks in the city, or a citywide?
No, I actually don't, I don't know. There's one site that we're looking at right now, but they're having, we haven't started negotiations on it, so we would be really premature to talk about it. If you know, and if you know the sites, let me know. It's not as easy as it seems.
Sure. To be clear, what you're talking about in August is a code update, not a zoning update.
That's right. It's not a zoning update, it's a code. To allow for these structures, which aren't, aren't permissible in the city right now.
I see. So don't basically give the city some administrative flexibility that doesn't currently have to do this in various specific locations later once we figure out where it makes sense.
No, he doesn't understand, it's building code, not zoning. He's just understanding. We've had some questions about the sustainability. Every year we do an annual update. That update is scheduled for November fourth. It'll be there because there will all have the whole sustainability staff there. And that staff has grown a lot. We've, I just met the sustainable, sustainability person, I forget what her actual title is, but she's actually in Community Resources and she's applying, she's doing a review of all of our buildings. Because as you know, right now, the building resides in Community Resources. Actually, it's past July one, that's changed. Now it's going under quarter Peterson in operations. So that person will report to him and will be responsible for all of the, all of those efforts across our city. We also have an A V A coordinator that they'll be working on these areas. In the meantime, I've asked our sustainability staff to give a report, to give a written update, to make it really comprehensive and thorough. So you have something to hide me. What I'm learning, especially through the eyes of our member city council members, I'm learning that we're, we make a lot of assumptions as staff. And, and we need to be better at giving reports. So I had asked for a written report that's really thorough. So you can just dig into it and ask questions and, and really consume it if that's your interest. That's the other reason I wanted to do this report this way, so that it's kind of the. That's the other reason I wanted to do this report this way, so that it's kind of the stuff, it's the information that I would talk individually to you, but I may not talk to everybody about it. So if you like this format, I'll, I'll continue, but we can talk about that later. I wanted to talk a little bit about some operational issues that we're facing. One is, as you know, we've received numerous complaints about busy intersections and motor washing, and the concern about safety. And both the safety of the people who are doing the washing and the safety of the people who are driving. In some of these intersections, I know you've seen it, the place where they're standing is kind of scary. There's, there's a pretty high ground and a really small area. So we've talked about this at nauseam at the staff level. You know, it's not ever, you can't, it, it, you just can't say, "The police will enforce this, the police will enforce this." We just don't have the resources to do that. And for a whole lot of reasons, that's really been bad with some residents. So we're gonna try something. We talked to Dr. Kavan, and we talked to Vision Zero, that you're really familiar with, okay? And a lot of other cities are doing this. Before we do this, I wanted to see what you thought of this. And that would be posting signs like this that say, "Safety focused, save a life, don't give handouts here." And it's a part of our, I'm trying to read it backwards, our vision is, it's a part of the regional vision zero. It's, it's a soft touch, and it's a way to say, "Look, don't give handouts." And I think maybe, maybe not all of you see and know that kind of activity in the intersections. This is such a touchy subject, and I know people have real different opinions about it. And I'm gonna be really respectful of that. So before we went forward with doing the sign, we looked at all the different signs. This is the one that was recommended from staff. And what I'll do, because I can see you're all just kind of thinking about it, what I'll do is give you the next week to tell me what you think. Is that fair? And tell me what you individually think, do you wanna pass it around, or can everybody see it? It's pretty simple, I don't know if the person in there can see it too.
To clarify, don't give handouts here, does that mean people in cars should not give handouts?
That's the idea, just to dissuade that. There was a time where we said, "Here's a website to a, where you can do this," and we can do that too. I don't know, I, I, there was, there were so many iterations of this, I don't remember why that isn't a part of this, but we can, we can do that. And make it, um, you know, just a website that you can give to the non-cities in the neighborhood. It's a tough issue.
If you do that, I might suggest a Q or A, because then people will type on it, probably get my traffic sent here.
Hi, hello, how long ago was that? Uh, I was, uh, Kipling, just north of I-70, not too long ago. There was a sign on the median, and I said, I took a picture because it got my attention. Says, "It's unlawful to occupy median." City code such and such, can't actually read it.
What was that?
It's just, it's on Kipling, just north of I-70. No, I would do that, or we, if I'm not sure which, where that border is.
Exactly, where was it, on which side of I-70?
North side. Uh, uh, I, was that the first or second?
North side is Arbada.
Yeah, I think so, too.
South side is weird.
Yeah, so Arbada seems to have the ability to say, "It's even unlawful to occupy the median." Uh, I just took a picture, because I went, "Well, if they can do it, can we do it?" And I don't know, I'm telling you, I'm gonna- They, they had a sign, I could, I could send you the picture.
Yeah, basically, you have my selling context, if that's attached, you can just text it to me.
Okay, okay.
I know, it's a tough issue, and I've been really slow to roll this out to you, because I just think it's tough. And I know Westminster's struggling with it, it's every city. Denver is now, I just read it in the paper, Denver's doing something, you know, pretty aggressive.
They're issuing citations, like, they're, they're calling it unlawful, it was on the business.
How about if we do this, instead of starting the conversation at six forty? How about if, how about if I, I ask you to somehow bring me by this time next week? Is that fair, by my name? Whether, if, if you're good, or if you don't say anything, I'll assume that, that it's fine. If there's any real heartburn, tell me, okay, and then we'll have a, a subsequent conversation. Sound good? I want to be smart, I want to really be smart with this, these are human, please.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I think that's a reasonable timeline. Also, if there's any, like, information or data about, like, how Vision Zero came to that sign, I'd be really interested in it. And then also with, like, different municipalities. I understand that people have a lot of feelings about this, but are there, like, documented instances of harm in any cases or other things? So I'm just, I'm, you know, get, like, information, so to make like-
And I can tell you we're in the middle of it. So when I go to the code, all the cities are discussing this. So it's like a brand new frontier for everyone, please.
I have just like a similar clarifying question, which is about Vision Zero. Is a great organization, and I want to know a lot of things. I also wonder why it's not, like, a homeless advocacy group that is also collaborating? It seems to me that that perspective would be a really important component of this, given that the alleged point of design is to prevent the people who are panhandling from being harmed. So if that's actually true, and it seems to me that people with expertise in that should be a part of the population? It's okay, they are, they are-
So, we'll follow it, yeah, any of that's, you'll follow, you'll need that, thank you.
Yeah, can I just pass it around?
Sure, I'm having a screenshot, except I just did, you already went on, sorry, that's me, John, John's screenshot.
No, no.
Just a photograph.
A photo of my phone's side, I don't remember where. I mean, this is my- Or is your eye? Just going to these last-
What?
This is gonna say, going to these last three comments, to the extent you can give us links to resources that either Dr. Kavan provided, you think might be helpful for us or something.
I think Denver, Denver Vision Zero has a lot, don't you?
Yeah, Vision Zero has a lot.
Yeah.
Denver's just one.
Oh, um, okay, okay. I'm gonna keep going, in the interest of time. Just a caution, please, um, this kind of circles this bracket budget. When, I would ask you to be as mindful as you can when you're asking for staff to be at meetings. If you can share, when I, when I hear that you're sharing boards and bringing a staff person to come in and overview something, whatever that might be, as, as much as you can share those meetings, those, those, those hours are typically charged as OT. And I just want to start us to be really sensitive about the costs. So if two boards can team up and do a good thing on policing somewhere, if it makes sense, just be thoughtful about that, sustainability, um, comp plan, whatever that might be. To the extent that we can be just thoughtful about this, I appreciate that. I'm gonna keep going, that's all right. I want to talk carefully about some tension points that we are experiencing with the Jefferson County. The main one is the fact that we'll find out tomorrow if they're gonna put a new measure on the ballot that has to do with their revenues. Whatever that might be, I know there's increase in sales potentially, increase in property potentially, de-berse potentially. So all of those, I think, are on the table, and that hearing is tomorrow. And their meetings, just for the sake of fascination, are at nine in the morning. So they don't, they're not tired on Tuesdays.
Is that a hint, is that a hint?
It's a, but, it's a- They also get paid a hundred thousand dollars there. Yeah.
No.
I don't know. So, so, so that's created some interesting issues for us. The first one was, you know, we have a shared regional animal shelter called the Fodos Animal Shelter. And without much notice, we were notified, the cities were notified that Jeffco is pulling out of there. And we all went, "What, wait a minute." So we, you know, I know the history of all several down, and renegotiated, we all. And there's some things that need to change with this agreement, they'll come in front of you. We have had, I don't know how many attorneys from all our cities and the county that have looked at this, but essentially licensing animals, the revenues they expected from those licenses just aren't holding up. And so many people have chips on their, on their animals now that licenses feel a little obsolete and not necessary. So they should now, as well, do they have their ready shots, right? So we're trying to find a workaround, it hasn't worked very well, since we're seeing some real trends in dog ownership. Man, the things you learn, the things you learn, stop. So we're restructuring it, and all the cities have agreed on a restructure. And from my opinion, it's pretty fair. And I can, you know that, that we have, it's gotta be really fair for all the agencies. And typically, the agreements we enter into with the other county, um, agencies is based on, um, based on population. So it's as fair as can be. There, there's a little equation about dog ownership and population, which we could dispute, but anyway, it is what it is. And you're gonna see an agreement that's being updated, and that's happening pretty soon. I can take it up if you want, it's somewhere in the next couple of months. But, and, and feel free to read the whole agreement, but please do. But it's, it's, from my perspective, it's pretty fair. And we were able to salvage this relationship and stick, it's not stick, but enjoy, Jefferson County at the table still. So all the agencies are in, and there's less reliance on revenues from licensing. And the model now is more of a, a cost per year, and there's a little escalation allowed year over year so that we have a dependability in how to be done with this, and how to budget anything else for this. So just a little heads up on that. Under the category of tension points with the county, we, we have, we're still working on, going back to the mass population, working on some severe weather solutions. It's tough, I think, I, I think I reported this a couple of weeks ago. I've heard through the grapevine, I'll find out on Thursday, that the city has, the county has invested in some type of units, which will serve as some temporary cold weather shelters. So I'll find out if that's true, with pretty, pretty reliable sources, but I'll find out if it's true. We're really hopeful that the county will come to the table. They have approved, during their budget, they approved some additional, um, employees that are specifically focused just on the homeless population. And honestly, I have talked to them, because it's high time that they join all of us in serving recovery works. And I'm really grateful for that. We also want them, though, to be a backstop for us when we have to close recovery works, or when recovery works can only accommodate X amount of people, and we have X plus a lot more who need it, who need this shelter. So we need our partners to come to the table and to join us, so that we're not the only, the only famous site. That's not the right metaphor, but you know, so we're not the only ones. The severe weather shelter network, as we know it, probably is gonna go away. They are a real old school model and have really struggled with volunteers and just some real changes in, in the amount of people that are being served, so that they're kind of underwater. And we just can't afford to support them, the cities can't, they can't ask for enough money. So, um, so I'll keep you informed, this, there was, I should ask more information as I meet with the city county managers. I told you about the budget constraints that we're experiencing. I also heard from, um, Jeffco Mental Health, that were, Jeffco Mental Health and their struggling. Remember that they were gonna merge with Well Point, Well Power? That is gonna happen now, they decided not to do that, and financially, they're really struggling. They're asking their sweet partners for some support. I got a letter, it was a surprising letter, I got a letter on Monday that said, "For the year 2024, that we're in, they need an infusion from the city of Lakewood with eight hundred thousand dollars." And I thought, "Oh, wow, that's sudden and pretty undoable." So we're gonna meet with, um, the leadership staff there, and I know what their needs are, and how we can be helpful without. It really, I mean, that's just really a tough situation for us. And, but they're struggling, right? Our dollars are going away, and, um, that's just better, that's just our point. And the need for services isn't, right? The need for services is only increasing. Almost done. The last thing I wanted to talk about was, and if you have a question for me, I can talk to you after the meeting. Or something, I can, you can ask me about it, et cetera. Or whatever, comment here, whatever. City council meetings, joint board tour. City council tours, joint board meetings. We did have one set up with the school board, and that didn't happen, they canceled on us. So I'm gonna make sure that, that we're able to reschedule that meeting, so I'll stay on topic on that. You know, we have a tour of this last site tomorrow, that's really, will be helpful as you hear from your residents or constituents, what's going on, what is this thing? It's called, it's also known as Tin Cup, the Tin Cup facility is over in Irving Valley. So I really encourage you to come. I think we'll have snacks and water for you, you're somebody kind of meatier. But, you know, we're gonna get in a restaurant, we're gonna go here and go there. So if you can join us, I really appreciate that.
If you keep moving, you don't move when it's ninety-five one day, so.
You do, but you don't wait till it's a hundred, would you do that?
Say, "Don't, I'm going for snacks."
It is gonna be, yeah, I wouldn't make it, you're gonna park, so, I know, I know, it's gonna be something. It is what it is. So, that, that's all, that's all. If you want any other tours that you really think would be beneficial, it sounds like we're gonna need to tour a rebuild technical structures site, because it sounds like so many of us have done that, and enjoy. If there's something else you want to do, I, I think it's good, I personally think that would talk to the fire. I think that would be really timely, we've had this conversation before, to really talk about the changing needs in our cities, so that the fire can be a little more able to understand what these needs are. Especially when you think about these new structures that are fully permitting, potentially. That has implications to the fire staff. So to have these conversations on your face-to-face and saying, "Here, you know, here's what we're seeing in our city, and here's how we can use some flexibility," that's, to me, that's always a good thing to do. Since we're running short on time, I want to be really respectful of the fact that, um, we've got people waiting downstairs. So, is that right? We've done questions, we're all, we've gone, I'd love to know if I've gone down this format. Okay.
I would love to have more questions from, you know, any-
We can, what we can do is add more time. This was a test drive, I'm not really sure, if, if you're into tomatoes, I'm trying to make sure we can have tomatoes. But, yeah, we can, we can do more time, maybe we can do an hour and a half, maybe we can start at like thirty. I'll do an hour or forty-five minutes of content, and you all can do thirty minutes of questions or whatever. We'll, we'll kind of restructure that, the intent was to do this every quarter. Every quarter, and in the meantime, I'll be listening to what I'm hearing individually, some of the, some of the things we're hearing from the public, and also what I hear from my peers, that I don't, I forget that that would be really valuable for you, to hear what other cities are struggling too. The only thing I ask you to do is to back to me by Monday on the sign, on the sign, that we would post at busy intersections. So think of elevator ones, think of coal faxes, I would just think, whatever, you all, this are, where we have the, kind of the most activity.
What is an option we could talk about this week, anywhere that we're having a conversation about?
How should we have a school conversation, yes? How do you want to do that?
At least you have it, it's better, it's mostly gonna be closing. It's a city, theory, I don't know.
I don't have a camera, can you do a study session?
That's, that's important, this is imminent. I don't think we could wait for a quarter, for women going to meetings. I'm not sure, we want to, I'm, I'm thinking, am I going to do an executive session? Because if this is a negotiated thing, you don't want, you don't want to negotiate ultimately with the people who are pushing with- because if this is a negotiated thing, you don't want, you don't wanna negotiate both of them with the people of the association, right? So, okay, well, thank you. Can we kind of talk that through and figure out how to, how to do this, 'cause time is important here.
Great. Okay, thanks. All right, I mean, no, I'm busy, so-